So, and welcome to the City of Helena's Commission Administrative Meeting, August 2nd, 2023, 4:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Adam Clark.
City Attorney Doctor, here. City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Think she's absolutely.
Commissioner Shertl.
Here.
And Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in this City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to be provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. Welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage. Commissioners and comments or questions?
Sure. Thank you. I just want to wish the Helena Senators good luck today when they play the team from Wyoming at the National Baseball Tournament this week. They're playing tonight at four o'clock.
Wait.
Uh, not sure. I don't. I think they're playing in Georgia. They're playing Wyoming.
But you got season tickets, you know?
I know.
So you can go to center for it, yeah. Any others? All right. Recommendations from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Emily Morris. You have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Denise Roth Barber will be our representative.
Okay, Barbara, you have the floor.
Yes. Hello, Mayor and members of the Commission. Um, it's a short report out. We spent a fair amount of time at the last meeting discussing the letter we received from the Helena Commission, um, basically telling us that effective immediately, HCC members will be removed from all advisory councils and, um, almost to a person, everyone was quite disappointed in the Commission for taking the guidance of the Bozeman Local Government Council over the guidance of engaged, involved citizens here in Helena. So that we will be, we are generating a letter and you will be receiving a letter to that effect in the near future. Um, that's pretty much all we have.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Ms. Barber? Thanks. City Managers Report.
Mayor of the City.
Okay. Discussion on Transportation Fees. Director Kanatki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, this afternoon, we're gonna just go over a couple of the fees that there was questions on the last time we we met. The first one is, um, we're gonna give the maybe we're gonna talk about parklet fees and then the transit fees.
That piece of stuff.
Oh, it gets better. So I'm gonna start off with parklets and then Chris will go into the the transit fee. So when when we discussed this last, there was a question on equity of between the angled parking and the parallel. So we went back and and looked at it a little bit. So the average parallel spot is twenty feet by eight feet wide. And doing this, we would, uh, basically recommend, uh, or a minimum of two spaces so that there'd be enough for a twenty foot, um, say, parklet and then have enough room for the buffers and still room for the cars to park on either side. Um, that total square footage comes up to be about two hundred and fifty-six square feet. As you move the angle, angle parking spaces are a little different. They're nine by twenty on average. Um, again, we would recommend the minimum two spaces. And then instead of the four-foot buffer on each end, where in the parallel, the car is moving back and forth. With angle parking, you're pulling into a space anticipating a car parked right next to you. So in this case, we're, we would require two and a half foot buffer to give that door swing a little bit of room and then that comes up to be two hundred and sixty square. So that extra four square feet, that's about as close as we could get. So it would be, um, equal. So in talking last time, the original, um, fees were based on per spot. So it was fifty-five dollars per spot per week or two hundred and twenty dollars per spot, um, per month. That's based on eighty-five percent of a thirteen-dollar pay-to-park, um, fee that you see for a daily parking space. The, since we were talking about the two different parklets, um, the two spaces there would be twenty-nine through four and then the five spaces would equal up to be about seventy-three hundred dollars. So when the the new parklets came up, we just, just, we said twenty-five hundred and now it's more reference to the block that what we came up with these alternates is we could take the current pay-to-park rates with the discount, and reduce, instead of eighty-five, reduce that discount to fifty percent. And that would be around seventeen forty-two and then forty-three hundred dollars respectively. Alternate two is more along the rate or along lines of what the businesses, um, proposed. Take the daily or the monthly permit for space and that comes out to be about a thousand dollars for two spaces and twenty-five hundred dollars for five spaces. The other way we could do it is our permits, we do provide, if you pay for a yearly, annual, you get a discount. So we take that, that rate would be sixty-seven fifty and that would reduce that to nine oh four or nine hundred and four dollars or about twenty-two hundred dollars. So the areas where these pay-to-park, um, are, or the areas where these parklets are, are as in the pay-to-park, they're in their core area where and the traffic study, the parking study that, um, happened, um, some years ago, anticipated people moving in and out of those spaces to provide an open space for businesses around there. So, you know, that's where I think we would apply the pay-to-park fees, um, as a proposed option for this. And at this point, I would stop in entertaining any questions that you might have on this.
So I just got one question. I know last week when we discussed this, uh, with the business downtown by Burden or Gobart. Have only one. Is it that they have only one part?
No, their, their actual parklet is about twenty-six feet wide. And then theirs is a little different because like they said, they're they're right up against the bald out. So they would take up the typical two spaces because they are encroaching into that second space by the buffer and everything else.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I guess, but if we were to go with the permit rate, it's not that those spots, we don't, we don't offer permits for those spots that are right in front of businesses. Our permitting, our permitted parking is like along other, in parking lots, along park on the, next to parking garage. Is that accurate?
Yes, Mayor. Commissioners, we don't offer, um, permit rates, but since that was proposed by the business downtown, we built, put it up there so that you could see the differences.
It has all these bases.
Bye-bye.
Right now, we are offering a way more significant, just proposing a more significant discount than if we were to go with. We're, we're subsidizing their purpose right now. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So, Mayor and Commissioner Dean, the idea behind that is if we go back to this one. So part of the reason I think they're taking up five and having to pay so much is because they built it perpendicular to the sidewalk rather than fitting it in the angled spots like you put on a parallel area. So my little fence is there, which is the best thing I could find to represent a parklet. If they build it to suit, given the conditions outside the building, then that's where that equity comes in that we were looking for in the last meeting, that still the same amount of square footage as you would get from a parallel space, just a little bit of a different shape. But it would save you from having to get an extra parking space just to keep it squared up. Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
I see no public comment online.
Excuse me?
I see no public comment online.
Thank you. Department reports.
Well, not quite done, Mayor. Sorry.
Good.
So the other, the other area we had some discussion on was transit fares. Um, so, um, we were asked the question as to how far back the eighty-five cents goes. Um, you know, originally, we were kind of under the impression it was somewhere in the nineties. We found some documentation that it goes all the way back to nineteen seventy-nine. So it's been a minute. Um, so at this point, the average price of gas back in nineteen seventy-nine was eighty-five cents a gallon.
I don't know how to calculate. How many years ago is that?
About forty-five-ish, almost. So to to give you an idea of of the different ranges, um, that we talked about before. So if we were to go to a dollar and the effect that has on our revenues, so ultimately seventy-five hundred dollars in gross revenue increases and about forty-eight hundred to net. So the difference between the gross and net numbers that we'll see isn't going to be our transaction fees. So the thing to keep in mind with them is that not every transaction we have is is relevant to a transaction fee. That's that thirty-five-ish percent that we pay for the credit card transactions. Um, we've been looking into a replacement for that. There's not one at this point. Um, we're hoping that some options become available soon. But as we go through, that'll be the difference. So at a dollar fifty, we're looking at about twenty-one thousand dollars extra. Two dollars would be thirty-seven thousand. Two fifty would be fifty-three. And three dollars would be almost seventy thousand dollars in gained net revenue for transit. So this is kind of the range that we're looking at. Again, our estimated rides, about fifty thousand per year. Right now, that's earning us a neighborhood of forty, fifty thousand dollars, uh, in revenue for transit. So you're gonna add the net numbers to that and that's ultimately where we end up at. Um, every dollar that we can add in revenue from the fares themselves is that much less that, uh, we have to seek in a contribution from the general fund each year.
What is the general fund subsidy at this point?
I believe for FY twenty-four, it's about four hundred and twelve thousand, somewhere in that range.
Just really quickly, is the four hundred and twelve with the projected three dollar or eighty-five cents?
It's with the project, Commissioner.
Okay. So we would still be? Yeah.
So questions for Transportation Department? What did?
We got a few more for you, some food for thought there. Move through as quick as we can.
Go ahead. Oh, my gosh. Did Sheila Danison say this?
So, um, related back to the parklet fees. As you recall, about five years ago, we were asked to do the first hour free parking to help the businesses downtown and that's averaging about nineteen thousand dollars a year. We're estimating in lost revenue that first hour free. So that's just something to take into consideration. Parking tends to, um, we match our expenses and revenues. Uh, we try to put some money away in the bank, but maybe we, parking does not get any money from the general fund at this point. Um, but we've had to constrain our budget, actually, for the simple fact we just don't have enough revenue coming in to do some projects that are needed. Some of these constrained projects are maintenance of existing lots. The things that were priorities in our budget were the ADA upgrades. So those are in the budget, but we had to move some, uh, maintenance stuff off to make our budget work. The other one on on the parklets is just, and this is not anything we need to discuss tonight, but just, again, food for thought, is, you know, exclusive use versus non-exclusive, um, versus expanded pass for for the businesses. So it's something that, uh, right now, they sign a non-exclusive. It says that they're, they allow anyone to sit at the parklets they want. If they were to go exclusive use, say, like the, um, Old Salt or Old Burden or use or the Suki Cafe or Met Training Grill, that's a commission action and then that square footage that they would be using, um, becomes their exclusive area to use and that comes along with by city code, a five percent market value that they pay on an active basis. And again, like I said, the the pay-to-park is our core areas. That's where the businesses have the primarily for the parking for their customers to come and go. And, uh, you know, applying the permitted rate in that area doesn't follow the fee structure that's in that area. Again, just food for thought. And then the last thing is we can look at flexing those, uh, beginning and dates. I know that there's, we have late snows, we have early snows. So I guess it depends on the season, but we could look at flexing those dates a little bit. I don't think that they would want, um, their parklets up during the, you know, during the winter time when there's snow burns up against them. So there'd be a, I think, a spot every year that they would come up and come, like be put up and come down.
So moving back to transit, uh, some things to think about. So again, like we just talked about, rate hasn't increased in almost forty years. So I started at nineteen ninety and if, if the city had raised the rate by just a quarter every five years from nineteen ninety till now, we'd be approaching two dollars and eighty-five cents in twenty twenty-five. So we would be, and that's, again, that's just a quarter every five years. And so asking, going, looking at the three-dollar range, I know it seemed like a big jump from eighty-five cents to three dollars. Um, when you think about it as that, it's, it's less than a quarter every five years. If you think that there's another ten years before nineteen ninety, the rate was in place. Other options are transit's no longer the standard fixed routes. Uh, it's what a lot of people consider a premium curb-to-curb service. Um, so the same service in the private sector is about four hundred percent more on average. So I, I know that I scheduled myself a ride on, on one of the apps and, uh, it's about fifteen dollars for me to get from our office over at the shop to here.
And now the city's MPO status is definitely gonna change the, not the operation of of the MPO, but the structure and the funding needs as we haven't had a clear on the state and the feds haven't been able to give us a very, uh, clear understanding of what, uh, expected revenues are going to be looking at through those grants. So there's definitely some changes on the horizon.
So in the, in the context of a fee discussion, Mayor Commissioners, um, our with transit under the current program, our operating expenses are reimbursed at about fifty-four percent. Under the new program, our understanding is that they go down to about fifty percent, which means that our match would go up for those. And some of the categories are likely to change. So we have some administrative expenses that we can submit now that get an eighty percent reimbursement. And those would fall down to a fifty percent reimbursement once we're in this new status.
Any questions?
All done, Mayor.
Well, you're done now. Commissioners? Comments, questions?
What do you, I mean, if you think it's fair to say that our most frequent users are not to be the ones that are paying three dollars, you know, for the fare because they're buying the passes that drop the rate?
Yeah. So Mayor Commissioners, yeah, I would say that a fair number of our riders would qualify for some of those discounted rates, either whether they're buying the multi-ride passes or they're buying the monthly passes that we have in there. Um, or we do have that, uh, the veteran and elderly and student discounts and things like that. So most of them, I think, would fall into some of those categories.
Do we have any comments from the community? Public comments on this topic?
Mayor Commissioners, I see no public comment online.
Okay, thank you. Department reports, sustainability update, community recycling.
Mayor and Commissioner, uh, what we wanted to do as a department is just come up with some of the updates and information that may be coming up in the community. The, the Commission may have some questions or we have stuff that would better represent what we do as an operation. Um, a lot of people don't know what we do with biosolids or what biosolids are. So we just give updates and if anything comes up as far as you're hearing anything from the community, we'd like to inform you and just update you of what is going on. Uh, one part that we'd like to also add, another one is the solar for all. I know that that was brought up by the Commission to look at and the solar for all is a federal grant that can be applied for at a twenty-five million dollar, um, minimum over the five years and I'll happily give an update on that, but we are looking, looking at a coalition. Um, and it's very fast-moving. We need to get the noticement tent done by August fourteenth. Um, but we, I did have a directors' meeting with all the public works directors of the seven major cities and they are interested, uh, at least hearing more and seeing if to form a coalition. But we are actively pursuing this grant to see if we can at least get it in the City of Helena. If not, uh, overall, but if a quick update, I turn it over to Leah.
Sure. I think you covered most of it, but, um, it's not great. Um, but so, yes, we are looking at joining a coalition. Um, that also involves the Montana Business Assistance Coalition. Um, we had discussions with the Montana Department of Environmental Quality and that is actually the entity that currently manages their solar loan program. And, um, in talking with MBACK, um, they are very interested in, in being a member of the coalition and administering the, the loans portion of, of what we're talking about.
We just have those. We are also including the league. We're gonna have all the cities involved. We have the league that's representing and maybe taking a part of that and where it fits in, but we'll be the lead city because the league can't be the, the lead applicant. So we are taking the lead and moving forward on it. And it is for solar to put on houses for low income or
Disadvantaged.
disadvantaged areas like the Sixth Lord. That is one that has been classified. So we can go into people's houses. We can't. We just offer it up and then they can get solar on their houses, which includes batteries and uh, structurally taking care of roofs too. So it's a, it's a really good program and we are moving forward with it. And so that's what we're looking at right now.
Thank you. Comments from the Commission?
Just, Mr. Mayor, just would like to say thanks for the update on that. That sounds very promising.
Thank you. Do we have any comments on, from the public on this topic? Adam Clark. Hey, moving along. Sustainability updates, sustainability plan. Director, you have the floor.
I will move with the community recycling. Just want to give a, a quick update on what we're doing. Um, this is mainly the drop-off locations that we have around the city and it is a integrated solid waste plan with the county because we do manage that and they do pay us two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for recycling, the same as what the City of Helena does. And so these are the drop-off locations to try and give you a heads up of what, how many you were collecting and where we're at. And I'll just turn it over to Coleman, the Deputy Director.
Thank you, Ryan, but I, Miranda is, is leading the charge on this one. So.
All right. Yeah. So we have seven drop-off locations throughout the city and county, uh, four in the city, three in the county, and then we also have our transfer station. Uh, at all of these locations, we accept aluminum and tin cans, newspaper and magazines, office paper and cardboard. And in addition to all of that, at the transfer station, we also accept plastic and glass as well as many other things. Um, so our city locations are Safeway, Lewis and Clark County Fairgrounds, Dale Harris Park, Boeing. And then our county locations are Grub Steak, uh, Valley Sand and Gravel off of McQ Drive and Canyon Ferry and Mini Basket. And I must say at, when I was taking these pictures yesterday, uh, four of the seven locations, I had to, I had to wait for people to get out of the way. So they're very highly used. Um, and these are just some of our, uh, diversion numbers. So for fiscal year twenty-three, we diverted fifteen hundred tons and then, uh, thirty-one tons of aluminum, sixteen point two tons of tin, two hundred and thirty-seven tons of glass, fifty-eight tons of plastic, a hundred and eighty-eight tons of paper and nine hundred and eighty-one tons of cardboard. This is all seven locations and the transfer station. Um, and then from phase one of our Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan, I believe we had about eighteen, fifteen hundred survey, people take the survey, um, but seventy-eight percent of city residents are utilizing recycling and then of that seventy-eight percent, seventy-one percent are using transfer station and drop-off locations. Um, and then addition to our drop-off locations and the transfer station, we also have a contract with Helena Recycling for curbside recycling and we currently have fourteen hundred and ninety-eight, uh, customers, subscribers.
And there's one point that I would just add on this is a lot of these, uh, drop-off locations are put on private property. So we are at the discretion of the private property, uh, owner. We do not pay anything to have these locations. So it's to the kindness of their heart and like, uh, Valley, Boeing, you know, we can try and give them kudos to whenever, whatever we can, the mini basket. And we have one more drop-off location we're trying to find and that would be out the county. And so we are struggling to find anyone that'll let us in a location that would actually fit, uh, where we're trying to go. So any, uh, insight you have or any connections to try and get us a site would be, uh, very beneficial to us. We'd be appreciative of that.
We're done. Questions, comments, questions? Are there any public comments?
My name is Kelly Van Dyke. I wanted to thank, uh, because Ed invited me today. Um, we are citizens that live directly behind one of these recycling units. We also subscribe to the recycling. We are avid recyclers. Um, we've had some issues, um, with it being right behind my house, about fifty feet. So I'm off the McQ. So we're talking about the McQ one. Um, unfortunately, we have some avid recyclers that like to recycle around midnight. Um, so we hear lots of clang and bane, all that at midnight. They kind of turn their car to angle it where their headlights are into our house, wakes the kids up. Um, it's frustrating. We could complain a lot. We have, we've reached out a lot and I wanted to thank Pete Anderson as well. I don't know if he's here. He called me back and Ed, I don't know his last.
Coleman.
Thank you, Ed. And inviting me to the meeting. Um, we have a solution. Uh, we were hoping that we would bring it today. Um, it's on Kim Smith's land and he actually owns a lot of land in the county. So if you wanted to put one out in the county, I'm sure you could talk to him. He owns a lot by Jim Darcy and further north on McQ. We would just like to slide it two hundred yards south. There's kind of a break between two large neighborhoods. There's Golden Estates Two and Golden Estates One. And there's kind of a big area on Kim Smith's land, so same land that we're talking about. We were hoping to put the recycle bin in that spot so that it wouldn't disturb either neighborhood. And really, that's just picking it up and moving it two hundred yards. I think Ed and I talked, um, they were worried about the access point, but they would use the same access point. They would just have to drive another two hundred yards.
Okay. So, uh, go ahead. Have you had a chance to speak with Kim Smith now, moving?
I have his phone. Um, I, I almost caught him yesterday or two days ago. He was on his land, but he was busy with some semi trucks. I didn't get to talk to him.
Can you coordinate something like that?
Yeah, I think that we can reach out to Kim Smith, see how that would, would work or not. Um, I'm not sure. Have not been out there with the exits.
And Mayor, you mentioned we can look at that. There are some limitations on what we can and cannot do and that is a private, uh, recycling one out in the county. So that is a county drop-off location, not a city drop-off location. And it's across, it's across the McQ Avenue from the subdivision. So you have all of all of the McQ Avenue, so it's across where McQ is. So we we will pursue it. Uh, there are some limitations and uh he doesn't own all the land down there. It is only a portion. I believe that they can only move it and stay on his property. What? A hundred and fifty feet talks.
We would take a hundred.
But just let's just look into it and see what we can do. And so we can't do anything great, but we can do something less.
So my name is Jacqueline Gomes. I live right next door, so we are connected the same way. And I can appreciate the opportunity to look at bringing you back. But as part of that conversation, Kelly highlighted, there's a, there's a noise issue with it. There is significant increased traffic. And as you mentioned, our challenges is we are still considered city limits, so we're um falling under and fall under all the city protections. And then that county line kind of jags around. And so then we are, we we have struggled quite a bit with that disparity between county and city um and some of the flexibility that's been happening over there. So um there has been some increase, but in addition to that, we've got heavy vehicles coming to dump sometimes six AM in the mornings while we're back our bedroom. So there's, there is a significant negative impact um to us on a regular basis with those being there. And then with school, you're getting back in and the number of children walking on a regular basis, I would say that would be a consideration as well because that does fall under city.
And what we've noticed is um when they're dumping, obviously trash can fall out from from the canister into into the truck itself. Where that is just left on the ground and then it blows western wind into our backyards. Um, so I mean, it's less than desirable. I think we were both frustrated. There was no communication that it was going to be placed there. It just showed up one day. So that was frustrating as well.
Thank you. Uh, we'll look into.
Thank you.
Are you done?
Uh, that one, we'll move on to the sustainability plan. And that one, I will turn over to Leah.
So we have reopened our request for proposals for the sustainability plan. Um, it is now going to be closing on September sixth. Um, I know that we've received some some inputs from some interested parties um that are very interested in submitting proposals for it. Um, then we've also received some input from uh from some uh environmental advocacy groups and things like that. Um, we've talked with our CCB about their comfort level with our sustainability plan, our sustainability plan slash audit. And uh I believe their comfort level has increased with with the plan as well. Um, some of the issues that were brought up were that um it lacked a a plan. And uh that was an interesting thing because it, the whole idea behind it is to establish a plan so that we have a way, a path forward um to. So the current climate action plan addresses a large number of uh sustainability goals for the city. But it doesn't really outline how we can get there. And that's what this plan is designed to augment is it's supposed to give us the plan of how to get there to meet our sustainability goals in our climate action.
Mayor Commissioners, if I may, um, and it's also, I mean, we we need to look at everything. We we have, we can't be laser focused on certain things, and we really just need to look at the big picture. The example that I provided provided in the memo was just one example. We have three hundred thousand dollars and a thirty year shelf life on two different items. Where are we going to get the most bang for our buck? And I know not all of it is simple dollars and cents, but it's it's a good, good element to factor in. And really, that's what we want to know is if we only have X amount of money, where can we get the most bang for our buck?
And Mayor, just to add on that, the main thing about the plan is it gives us the track work and the direction, the map, to be able to get to those sustainability goals. Um, we will be able to basically create a master plan, create a C C C I P. So we can start to go through what it's going to be, where can we put solar? Where can we put replace our most uh energy hogs that we have out there with the pumps? Um, and then we'll be better set up for grants because if they come in and say, okay, we'll give you a grant to put solar panels on this bill. Well, after further review, we can't because of the structure, because of historic, because of a whole lot of different things. We will have already done all that footwork up front and then say the best place to put it is on the chamber building or our buildings just aren't the best. We need to put them on pedestal ones like out at the transfer or the the uh fleet. And so to be able to take care of that, so this is what we're looking at, and this will give us the the map and be able to show it to you where we'll be going in the future.
Are you done?
I'm I'm done. I think.
The commission?
It's just really briefly. So I that's I I was a little bit confused when we got some of the comments from some of the from one of the statewide environmental groups. Um, that was additional pieces in this RFP, but what they were asking for is is the whole point of of why we're pursuing a sustainability plan. Would you say that's accurate?
Yes.
So seems like more of a misunderstanding or miscommunication of what we're looking for and provide. We want to develop a roadmap as to how we achieve the goals that we've already adopted.
Mr. Coleman, I appreciate the the contrast that you provided in the memo. You know, we're past a certain dollar amount can be spent. I think that's something that's important for us to understand. As you say, there's there's a tendency to focus in on certain solutions and there are others out there that maybe is good. And better uh bang for the buck. It's thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, Commissioner Dean, to your comment. So the first paragraph of this memo is the start of the RFP where it clearly lays out that we want a roadmap, and that's what we're asking for. So I'm not exactly sure where the confusion came in because I thought it was fairly clear, so.
Thank you. We'll continue sustainability update, land application of biosolids.
Mayor Commission, this is one that it's that is actually the best sustainability uh use that we have out there. It's one of the best things that we can do in the city and not every single city gets to be able to do this. And this is the land application of biosolids. And well, I'll turn it over, but the biosolids is the waste product that comes out of the wastewater treatment plant. And it is one of the best fertilizers that is out there. And land applying it basically skips a step in composting. So we use this in composting and this just skips um where it goes, but I will turn it over.
So first off, one of the um things that people don't quite understand is that biosolids are fully cooked. They are fully treated. They're they're not like septic waste. A septic pumper goes out and land applies on a field that is straight out of the your septic tank. Um, this stuff is is actually fully treated. And we've been, a lot of this is in the memo, but we've been pumping on the deal ramps since the early eighties. Um, we put about two point two million gallons a year on six thousand acres. Um, it's placed at agronomic rates, meaning vegetation picks it up and uses it in a beneficial way. And that's pretty much the highlights. And you know, we also, when we're not land applying it, we are making um compost with it. So so it's a win win all around.
So just wanted to point out there is our compost with the landfill that we are doing in conjunction with Lewis Clark County is food grade. So now we are being able to sell it and can be able to go anywhere. We're selling it in bulk or we aren't. The county is. But since we are integrated, we do that. And the best way I like to quote Jeff is the biosolids is the waste product. And basically the bugs, the dead bugs from our treatment process to consume all of the waste that comes in. So it isn't just the solids that drop out of the waste. It is actually just the bugs uh that consume everything. So it is a totally different product that is out there uh than we are land applying.
And Mayor, Alex, can you play that video? Or can you do that, Chris? So we have a video of the actual land application because people have different ideas what it looks like, but it's spreading it straight on the ground. It it's not incredibly romantic, but it's very effective.
Adam Clark, do we have any online public comments? Okay, would you let him in, please?
Uh, just one question, are are these biosolids being tested for forever chemicals?
Uh, Mayor Commission, you can look at, we have the these, the suite of uh chemicals and metals that we treat it for that is based off of an EPA permit. Um, I believe what he is asking is looking at like PFOS. Uh, that is not a requirement for us to do that. And what PFOS is and how it is treated and what we are going to do with it is still a national and federal uh discussion of where we go with that and with what regulations. But at this point, we are not looking at PFOS. It's a very, very, very tough uh test to be able to do um and very expensive.
Thank you. Do you have any others, Adam Clark?
I have no other answers.
At this time. Mission discussion directions of city managed fire department master plan. Oh, it's a regular. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission on whatever?
On anything?
Uh, within limits.
But it doesn't have to be on the agenda, right? I would roughly know if that works.
Please. Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, my name is Heather Graham. I'm the secretary of a nonprofit called the Helena Regional Sports Association or H R S A. Um, our goal is to address the unmet recreational and well being needs in the greater Helena area, Lewis and Clark County area. Um, the history of this is uh the nonprofit years ago wanted to build a pool. Uh, it conducted some studies, an economic feasibility study and a sustainability study. The results of both were very positive. Uh, they concluded that there are many unmet needs in the area. The community very much supports things like a new pool, more hardcore facilities uh and that uh under various scenarios, the economic benefit to the area is significant, generating well over one point three million dollars a year. Those studies were done in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen timeframe, and the focus ultimately was expanding the Y M C A pool and the Y M C A facility. The pandemic came, um, there's, and the focus of H R S A has changed. What we are looking at uh now, uh, but let me say, we put in uh an application in January of this year for ARPA funds of sixty four thousand dollars. Um, the commission has neither granted nor denied our request. And at that time, we didn't have, um, we didn't have a concrete project, but we have to know how to fund the O N M. Uh, I think most people know that recreational facilities often struggle to meet their O N M, and it's only fiscally prudent um before we go too far forward to make sure that the O N M can be funded. So that's where we were in January. Things have really expanded, and I wanted to let you know where we are at. It's once again requested you grant uh grant our request for our funds. For the past few months, we've been meeting with the uh fair board at the Lewis and Clark County Fairgrounds. We have not met with the commissioners yet, but we understand they are well aware of what we're doing. Um, are um what we are now proposing, and it's in conjunction with the fair board, would be a private public partnership that would construct the following. One is a large indoor arena that seats over seven thousand people. Second is an aquatic center. Third is an additional, uh our additional hardcore and indoor turf facilities. These facilities are vitally needed in the area. Uh, anybody who has kids knows that if you want big meats, you have to go to Missoula, Bozeman, Billings, et cetera. Um, lots, the the fairgrounds can't uh can't support huge concerts because it doesn't have seating. Uh, and the community, we believe the community will very much support this. Uh, and we think this could be very transformative for this area. So as I said, we've been meeting with the fair board now, uh at least for the past few months, sometimes on a weekly basis. Where we are right now is H R S A, not the county, but Helena Regional Sports Association. We will be funding or providing uh an economic and updated economic studies, an updated sustainability study on O N M. We have a plan for conducting extensive public outreach in which we will meet with stakeholders. We're going to go to other, I mean, we're going to go to all the communities in the county. Public meetings. We will have meetings with uh uh elected officials and with community leaders. We will then come up with a a formal plan based on all of the public input that we've received. And then we will go to the Lewis and Clark County Commissioners to see if they'll support a bond initiative. Um, we are looking at twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. We are very actively involved in this. I have multiple meetings day on this at this point. I am very optimistic about this because the fairgrounds has utilities, has land, there's parking. And the fair board is very, very enthusiastic about this, and they're spending a lot of time on this. And we believe that this will be supported by the community. But again, bringing it back to you, the sustainability element of this is critical. And we have our own ideas as how as to make sure that this is financially sustainable. But that's what the public is going to want to know, and that's what we want to know. It's only fiscally proven to do this. And this is really the time where we need to, we would really appreciate support from the Helena Commission. Uh, we are now discussing, um, we're now, we have reached out to various consulting firms to do those studies. This is the time to do them. So I wanted to bring you up to date as to where we were, uh, and we're very optimistic about this. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate it. Where are we? Uh, Manager Burton, where are we?
Here, the commission uh agreed at the last discussion that we would average out those that yeah, three, four, five, we agreed to. Uh, I believe that that resolution should be coming forward on the second.
Okay.
For next consideration across all.
Do we have any other public comments? Adam Clark, any online?
See no public comment online.
Commissioners? Find a discussion? If not.
Well, it should have been up in department reports rather than. That's a mistake. Oh, okay. You have the floor by Chief Campbell.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I apologize that this agenda was miscategorized. I appreciate the opportunity to continue the discussion around the fire department master plan. Uh, this would be an ongoing discussion, so we want to focus the seedings uh conversation around the station in and of itself. Uh, Commissioner Dean and Manager Burton were involved with this committee's work here, so please feel free to chime in with your insights as we work through this. Um, just a note on what our desired outcome here uh was and is is to create consensus between the department, city leadership and citizens of the community uh for the construction of a third fire station. And that's in key with uh the findings of the master plan and summary of such. Uh, current issues for that station, um, a couple of things to to highlight that are uh supported in data in the master plan and summarized here. Uh, we've got some response inadequacy to the north aspects of Helena. Uh, some insufficient base space for apparatus, as an example, our regional hazmat apparatus is housed in Montana City. We do not have sufficient apparatus base space to house it within one of our own fire stations. Uh, we're running short of office space for administrative staff. Uh, we're at capacity uh for our suppression staff. We can add three additional F T Es and then our two stations are maximized. Uh, currently our uh office space and headquarters area uh lacks some media access. Uh, we have some insufficient training and meeting space. And we don't have a co-located training facility uh in order to facilitate training and response uh at a similar timeframe. Excellent. Please, Alex. Thank you. Uh, so a way to kind of demonstrate that inadequacy. So a way to kind of demonstrate that inadequacy to the north side of the station. Or excuse me, the north side of the city. This heat mapping kind of shows our call density over a five year period where the frequency of calls for service are generated in the community. As you can see, the railroad tracks bisect the city and without a station to the north side of town, we can have access and timeliness issues as it relates to answering those calls for service. So we wanted to look at a few options to get the conversation started and how we could start to address those types of circumstances. So option one, in part of these options is to relate to you what some of the conversation has been over the last decade or so. And try and bring those things to the forefront. So it makes sense how we can move forward with some of these opportunities. Station one's airport. They've got some land for lease and there's some pros and cons with that area. The lease option provides for negotiation potential there. Partnership with the Helena Airport Authority, there's roughly six and a half acres of land there. One of the conversations we've had with the airport authority is how does that horse trade work with land and leasing versus service provision and those types of things. And they would be keenly interested in Helena Fire Department taking over the aircraft rescue firefighting responsibilities for the airport as part of this deal. That would really increase the amount of staffing required to, to meet those service level demands. And in two weeks at your next admin meeting, we'll be talking very specifically about some of the staffing elements to this conversation. We're not there yet tonight. So trying to keep our focus in the station. There's construction height restrictions due to proximity and location of that area with the air traffic in and out. And then there's still, in our estimation, a response inadequacy to the north side of Helena. It's a fairly close proximity where station two already is. Option two is acquisition of new land. This map is G I S mapping, the blue areas or excuse me, the purple areas, city limits and the blue areas within are properties owned by the city of Helena. If you kind of, with your own mind, superimpose the heat mapping onto this. You can see there isn't a ton of city owned properties in the area where we see the highest call density on the north side of the railroad tracks. But there are a few city owned properties that provide us nearby areas that could help influence improved response time and service delivery to those areas. So some options, pros and cons there. The potential to optimize our proximity to service demand is, is good with the new land acquisition. Some of the cons there, there's some added layers, complexity to negotiate land acquisition could result in a change of land use as well as potentially increased costs. There's some county land that's in there, but then if we're talking about land swaps and things of those nature. And then there's some open lands that aren't suitable for construction, such as wetlands. So a handful of things to consider there. A lot of what you see in that map are already dedicated parks. And I don't think that would be something we want to engage in talking about reusing park space for fire station space. That would get the data up on some. So another option we discussed is there's some land around the wastewater treatment plant. In all, there, there's, that entire block is somewhere around 10 acres or, or so, I believe. The corner that we've got carved out in red there is in the neighborhood of three and a half acres. And there's some pros and cons as well with any of these options. Some of the pros, this particular option, city owned property, sufficient acreage. The minimal civilian impact insofar as we're not building a fire station in a, what is otherwise a city park right now in a citizen's backyard. It does have reasonable, reasonable proximity to the calls for service and demands on new development on the north side of the city. Cons potentially proximity wastewater treatment and exposure to byproducts at that facility. But there are likely engineering controls that we can build into the infrastructure to remedy those issues as well. Is that a nice way to say that? That shouldn't hurt. It was great. I'll, I'll pause here if there are any questions.
Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, Chief Campbell. I wanted to ask with the growth that we're experiencing, has that been figured into your, as the growth projections figured into the location of the fire station on the north side?
It has and it doesn't, continues to be. The zoning, the land use and, and some of those factors are addressed in greater specificity than I can get into today directly in the master plan.
Thank you.
Let's continue.
So some of the infrastructure that a, a station requires, it's fairly substantial. It's not just a commercial building. So when calculating the cost and the impacts of facilities like these, it's worth it to highlight a couple of those things. I won't read the list to you, but I can say that doors, decontamination, self containment breathing apparatus filling and some of the electronic infrastructure so that we correctly utilize our computer to dispatch and integrate with dispatch and dispatching radios and things like that. Those are all expensive elements to make a fire station functional and to ultimately improve and, and make sure we're getting emergency services to the citizens in as timely a manner as possible. I throw this in as an example because we don't get half concept design. It's hard to appreciate what we're asking for without a picture, but this is just merely an example of what some of the square footage could look like in terms of how it'd be utilized between training, community meeting area, kitchen facilities, office facilities, turnout room, decontamination area and obviously base space. We'd like to get deeper into a conversation about really defining those needs in a square footage analysis. And that will help lend itself toward the cost analysis of the project. The other element to this that we would like to have included is training facility. A realistic and safe training environment is essential to providing a competent and experienced firefighting force. As it stands now, our training building, we can't burn in and has some limitations to that exercises it affords us. And it's also not co-located with the station, meaning for our two station complement of personnel to train. We have to leave, work at that training site and then we're responding from that training site for any calls for service that come in during that scheduled training time. And a three station model, we would have the opportunity to train with two companies that are training facility. Leave from an optimized training location, a station location and potentially leave another, a third company out to answer additional calls for service based on geographic proximity. I'm sorry, go back, please, one hour. Thank you. So training buildings need to support the mission of the department. Building design and function need to meet the criteria for third party testing and certification. We use third party testing and certification to validate our training programs. So we have to have a training facility that meets those standard based or standard testing criteria. And there's an estimated cost there, but I, I meant to be deliberate about not including dollar figures at this time because we want to put all of that into a single package. So, uh, thank you, Alex. So the recommendations out of the
It's Chris.
I'm, oh, is that you, Chris? I thought she was doing it. All right. Well, Chris, you're, you're really rocking it here. So our recommendations from the department committee would be to, as this moves forward and it isn't necessarily actionable this evening, but solicit architectural firm to create concept design and preliminary cost analysis. Determine the station location, potentially budgeting for third party consultant for PR. So when it's time to educate our electorate on what we're asking, they're well informed. And then how to discuss a ballot item and what the timing of that might.
The only thing I would add, we didn't get into this, I'm going to speak quickly. Just for, for that, we didn't get into this at the, during the committee, but I think November 2024 might not, I would rather go earlier, like on a spring ballot or a June ballot during what will be the primary. I might be getting a little bit over my skis, but if we want to ensure that the electorate is actually focused on this really, really important project, I don't think that pursuing that during presidential election might, is the most opportune time for people's focus and consideration. So just.
Thank you. Comments, Commissioner? Do you have any public comments on this topic?
I see no public comment on that.
Manager Burton?
So Mayor will continue to bring pieces of this summary of the master plan before you at some point. We'll ask the commission and direction on any options or considerations.
Any other mistakes I'm overlooking? Any comments? This is adjourned.